...system. It's been working perfect for months and months and months. Okay, any other discussion? What are we proving in minutes? Call the question.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps. District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Scruton.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
All right, the proclamations and resolutions. Commissioner Reed, you kind of jumped on this before we got a chance to. I think all of us wanted to do it. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just want, we will try to get this, our county administrator to get much information as possible concerning our sheriff so we can present our proclamation maybe about two weeks from now. Try to invite his family members and everybody who want to be here at that particular time. Our sheriff did an outstanding job. It's a shame that we should, I don't even think we sent him in no flower.
I think we did. I think we sent something.
Oh, okay. But anyway, anybody else have anything input concerning this proclamation, they can go ahead and make a comment at this time, too.
Well, you know, the request was to send a donation in lieu of flowers, so I don't know which one we did, but we did one or the other. All right, you've heard the request from Commissioner Reed. I know there's nobody wanting to disagree with this, that we approve a warrant proclamation for our deceased former sheriff Tommy Boswell. And this will be presented at a later date. I would like to see the proclamation before we present it. So if it's all right with you, Mr. Reed, Commissioner Reed, we're going to vote to authorize the writing of the proclamation? And then let it come back to us at the next meeting, and so we can read it.
Right.
And prove it, and then we can present it later. I don't think it matters when we present it.
Right. As long as, well, we just instruct our county administrator, he has so much stuff that's time involved with done in the community. It may be a long proclamation.
It should be pretty long, because he was involved in a lot of stuff. And like I said, I had rather for the commissioners to see it before we actually present it, so.
And we want their families.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's why I say we can do that. What I'm thinking is we can approve the writing of it today. The next meeting, give it to us to present, and we'll approve that form of it, whatever it is, unless we have changes. And then at a later date, we'll bring the family in and present it. Is that agreeable with you, Commissioner Reed?
I have no problem with that.
All right, we'll have a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not going to allow any nays. Yes? Well, you know.
Yeah, they have copies. The cable company called me that was streaming it. And the church bandwidth wasn't strong enough to keep it going steady. So it was breaking in and out, but they have a copy of the full service. If anybody wants to get it, they can probably email it via link or whatever, but I can get that information to you.
Yeah.
They have the grape side, too.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Epps, technology is wonderful, but it's not perfect yet. It's still. But I'm sure they can get you a hard copy of it somehow. All right. No discussion. Business items. First, Russell County, rebuild America, county engineer.
Morning, Commissioners. We've got a bid from East Alabama Paving for the first round of our Rebuild Alabama. It's to resurface of Brooks Road, Hill Street, Pick Three Lakes, and Ugly. And we'll be bidding more later on, but this is just the first one. And the bid came in at 334-166.
Is that about what was expected?
Yes, sir. It was, it was hard to predict this first one, but it was very reasonable.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, you've heard the presentation from our county engineer. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Scruton moved to approve. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Epps. Now, do we have any discussion? If you want any questions answered, there's enough paperwork in here. I'm sure the answer's in there somewhere. I have never seen so much paperwork on building a state project before in my life, but it's there, buddy. All right, having no questions, call roll, please.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps. District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Scruton.
Yes.
Motion carried. Mural design, Commissioner Corbett.
Chair, let's make up on me fast.
Yep.
So we talked about it the last meeting, and there were some comments about trying to include our partners here with Fort Benning, obviously, because they're, not only because they're good partners and a lot of their employees and soldiers live in Russell County, but also because they have land in Alabama. And including the jump zone or the field is in Alabama as well. So as you see it, you should have it in your packets. I sent it in, and also on the screen. The attempt by the artist in this design was to bring that portion into the mural, which I thought was a great idea. You actually have a soldier parachuting into the mural on the, I guess would be the left side. And you have the "Follow Me" emblem. You know, made the decision consciously to not put the picture of the sign in there with the political climate, the way it is now, with the name and everything. So I thought this might be the better design for us. Just want to get the commissioner's opinion on it. I just got this from the artist two days ago, so.
I think it looks good. It was already looking good, and this little bit added to it just makes it a little bit better.
Commissioners, do you all have any?
Any other Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way possible we can get our park and recreation fair down in Seale?
I think we can only, you know, we talked about that at our last meeting that.
We can sweep, you know, just.
This won't be the last one, and you know, you put too much on it, then it becomes meaningless. And the parts and recreation are so new. I think this sort of, this first one sort of depicts the history of Russell County. And then we'll probably do another one that'll, I would hope to have on it some of the changes and improvements that we've made over the years. And we are going to do another one, just to see if we find a location. We have some extra money. Yes, sir.
To me, the tree hides. The individual parachuting, if you could remove that particular tree, I think the other tree behind it is fine.
Well, probably. When they do it in real color instead of printer, it will be distinct, I think.
Yeah, he's in green, yeah.
I mean, because, I mean, right now, it's hard to tell on a computer printout, but I think that it will be real distinct when it is actually painted, and we'll make sure the artist notes that.
I kind of like the idea because it kind of camouflaged into it. The other piece of it is, is those are pine trees, and they will be a little bit more defined as pine trees, which is our, you know, number one crop in the county. You know, it's hard to tell they are, but obviously, when he paints it, it will be obvious that those are pine trees. And him coming into the side of it, just, I guess, just kind of.
But the tree, the tree will be the color of pine trees, which is not brown. It's not black. It's in between. Got some white in it. And the soldier will probably be.
It's a muddy green.
In a green camouflage, so it should show up pretty good.
I'll make sure the artist knows that we need for it to show up and pop on it when it, so you can see it.
I agree with you, Commissioner. It took me a minute to find it.
It's hard to, and like the deer, the deer is going to have to be shaped up a little bit better.
Yeah, but after I saw it, then it's real easy to see. Any other questions? We have a motion that this design be approved.
I so move.
Motion's made by Commissioner Martin. We have a second.
A second.
All right, we'll get to it.
We're going to get to the funding call?
Yeah, I would like to. Let's do another motion since he went ahead and called for that motion.
Yeah, I was going to do it separate. All right, any other questions? We've had enough call. Question, please.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps. District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Scruton.
Yes.
All right, now, address the funding, Commissioner. I mean, we really don't have to do that today. We got time, but.
Yeah, the schedule's ours. We can have him, I would like to get it on his calendar because the artist that we looked at is pretty busy. I will tell you, the first time he looked at this, he said that he thought this would be a $21,000, $22,000 project. By the time he did the design and looked at it, he said he can do this project for $14,000, which I think is a pretty good deal on that size of a wall. I would like the administrator to just ensure with the auditors, because the design piece was a professional service, and that we're not, that we will stay within the bid process or the bid amount, that we are legal in what we're doing there. But at $14,000, I think we talked in the last meeting that several of the commissioners are willing to put some of their project money into this project, which I think is great. And this be a commissioned project as opposed to just one or two of us doing it. So I would like to hear from, you know, from the commission, you know, how we share that. You've got your, hopefully, you've gotten your amounts that you have left in your, or you know what your amounts are. I know mine, and I'm willing to put up to all of mine in there if I have to. But obviously, if the commissioners help with this as many that can, then obviously, we can share that in this project.
I'll pledge all of mine less $1,000. I'm going to keep $1,000 in case something comes up.
Well, that was my question. I needed to know how much I needed to give.
So.
I don't know how much mine is. I know we spent some in to the schools, but we got it back, but we gave it somewhere else, so I don't remember exactly how much I got left. I know I got $5,000, $6,000 left.
I would suggest that we go ahead and look at how much it is, because the end of the year is coming. And if you plan, you can't carry it over.
No.
So if we need to go ahead and spend that money, that we'll know how much we have left, do something else with it.
Can I suggest this? We know in the last meeting, Commissioner Reed had already allocated his funds to another location. Any of the commissioners at the table that are willing to support this project, that we just split it amongst those commissioners? And if either one does not have enough, then we'll make it up in the other one. So I'm fine with that. If other commissioners want to do that. If not, if you don't want to bow out of this project, that's okay, too, so.
Well, at the last meeting, it was four of us, I think. Is Epps going to?
She didn't, she'd have to see how much he had left, too. Well, I can tell you, the phone's been so messed up, he might not have been able to get in anyway.
Reed, do you have that? All right.
If we take the four and divide by 14.
I'm fine with that.
That'll give you an amount that you can look forward to spending. And then if Ms. Epps come in and, you know, you do it by five.
I'm fine with that.
Well.
If we do it by five.
It's a, it's a, it's a good project, and we've taken a lot of time, so we know we're going to pay for it. I mean, just between me and Ms. Martin, we've probably got enough to pay for it if we have to.
So what I'd like to do then is make a motion that we approve this project at the $14,000, pending on the assurance from the auditors, and that we split the cost as appropriate and funding available between the five commissioners that have agreed to do the project.
You have a second?
A second.
All right, Commissioner Corbett made the motion to approve the design, and the cost will be split between the commissioners that desire to share it. Ms. Martin, second. Well, we, you know, it may be three, but we got the money. Don't believe me. We got, even last, you remember last meeting, Mr. Crowe said one of his big events had been canceled, so if we have to pull into that, we probably can. Any other discussion? Call a question.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps. District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Scruton.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, Ms. Horn, you're next. What paper the engineer didn't use, you did.
That was timely, your comment about the telephone system.
Well, I know I tried to make several calls during the week, and it just went everywhere.
We have been researching for the last couple of months because of our telephone system.
Pull your mic up a little closer.
It's outdated.
Pull it, set it on top of your paper or to the side or something, because we can't hear you.
I'm trying. Can you hear me now?
Not really. I can, but the people in the back can't, because you face this way.
Okay.
Move it in there. See, like, I got mine.
I gotta look at my paper.
Well, I can look at my paper. I can look to the side.
I'm trying. All right, can you hear me now?
Pull it a little closer. Now. Now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
As the chairman alluded to earlier, we have been experiencing telephone situations and issues, and I apologize if it's causing inconvenience to the citizens or, you know, the staff. But we have been researching and looking at options for replacing the telephone system here initially at the judicial, I mean, at the courthouse. And then secondary, we would look at the judicial center, because they're on about the same type of systems. The judicial's somewhat a little bit newer. This system is probably 15 years old, and it's outdated. They do not make parts for it anymore, so. Most systems now are going to, and I apologize if I don't say it correctly, the voice over internet void for some type of systems. And that's what we've been looking at. We've obtained several estimates to replace the system. And what you have in your packet today is from Beam, and it is a proposal that they have presented to us. We do have the funds budgeted, fortunately, in the public building fund. So I just want, today's just a report to let you know that we want to move forward in replacing the system because of the fact we struggled last time when we had a system failure to get a part. And I certainly don't want a complete system failure where we don't have telephones at all. The new system will replace what's here in this proposal. You'll see they've offered to drops of new lines. I guess you might say the cabling that they will connect to the phone. So it will not be attached to your computer, as some of the options do present. This will have its dedicated line. That is an enhancement, too, for security reasons. So we were very conscious of that. We don't want somebody to hack into our system and being that it's connected to the computer system, be able to download, you know, sensitive information. So we were conscious of that when our discussions, and that's an option. We do have some of the cabling or, you know, the fiber, as I guess they call it. It's already installed, but some are, they do not, the locations do not have the proper fiber to connect. So there will be some of that upgrade in the infrastructure to make the system operate correctly. We are already using the cabling or internet. They're already in the building. We've been using those for years, both at the judicial and the courthouse. So they already have the internet capability here in the building. They wouldn't have to run, you know, completely new lines or systems, that. So that's, that's a good thing. That helped reduce the cost a lot. But unless there's any objections, I'd like to continue working with them. It may not be this much, you know, because we may not.
What is the total amount?
It's right at $10,000. It's less than, and then we're looking at probably less. But this is just an estimate, because we're going off what we currently have in every office. Some offices may not need as many phones as we initially installed.
All right, my next question is, if we do this, how does that affect our annual or monthly charges? Is it going to be about the same?
Yes, sir. As you can see here.
I see it down there, but that's a little writing.
Yes, sir. In the estimate, you're looking, right at this point, less than $300 difference from what we're continuing paying on a monthly basis. And now, there is a one-time charge for the infrastructure, but that's not going to continue on monthly. But once that's paid, and we pay this initial setup for the new lines and cabling, then that's what they're estimating the monthly fee to be at this point. We hope to maybe reduce it, because we've had some employees leave and change, and we may not need those phones at those locations now, so.
Well, I'm sure we'll have it wired in case you do need them later, and it's not a very big expense to plug the phone in.
No, and this, the new phones, I understand, offer so many more features and capabilities. With the COVID-19, this system is really needed, especially with people working remotely from home. It offers a lot more accessibility for the employee and as well as the employer in communications, and that was a very nice feature to have.
Yeah, I know, like I mentioned a while ago, technology is increasing fast, but you know the best phone that's still around? Not many of them. It's the old kind where you go.
I think we have.
They still work. Every time, and you can hear perfect on them.
I did want to mention that to you. The, with the new fiber and the drops that they're going to place in the, and again, we're going to start with the courthouse first, probably the commission office, then we'll transition to the other offices, just to implement it slowly, excuse me. But with that, they, when our computer systems, for instance, we have a failure with computer systems, the phone systems won't go down, which I was really glad to hear. But I was worried if we lost internet connectivity, that would knock out our phones and computer. But having the separate lines, that will protect.
Unless the line itself is knocked down.
Well, that's true.
Then, I mean, you know, if a storm knocks the line down, because it's amazing to me how I can get cable and phone and internet over that same little copper wire, and one of them can go down and the other still work, but anyway.
And we've been working with our, thinking that computer vendor to make sure that our bandwidth is lining up and.
All right, are you asking us to approve for you to continue or to approve this cost?
Well, unless you have an objection of replacing the system, it's needed. Again, I'm trying to be proactive, and I don't want to be in a reactive emergency state trying to replace the phone system for the entire courthouse or the judicial. I don't want the judges upset when we affect us down. So I'd like to move forward. I wanted you to be informed that we are working on this. It has been an issue, and we are addressing it. But if you think it requires an official approval, at this point, we can.
All right, I'm going to ask for, all right, Judge, since this involves everybody in the courthouse. I know. Tell me. All right, thank you. Paulette, I assume you agree. She nods her head. So it's definitely needed, so at this time, I'd like to have an entertain for a motion to proceed. I mean, this is budgeted, I think.
I so move.
Motion's made by Commissioner Reed. We have a second. Have a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion? Okay, call for question.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps. District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Scruton.
Yes.
Thank you, and I will keep you informed as we.
And like I said, now, with that motion, we're not approving this amount, because it may go over it or it may go under it.
And I'll let you know the final once.
But this will be a ballpark figure.
Yes, sir, it is. It's the initial start, and we did, like I said, we did seek other, just so you understand, and in case you hear anything, we did seek other quotes and estimates from other area vendors as well. But again, since we're already doing business with East Alabama and being and have our internet with them, this was the most cost effective at this point.
All right, I'm going to intentionally skip the next item and go to the approval to solicit bids for county ambulance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We'll come back to it. We're not taking it off.
If you don't mind, I'm, at this point, I'm going to ask the sheriff just to kind of fill everybody in on how we've reached this point in to bid out the ambulance contract, and then I'll come in and state when we're going to open bids and so forth.
So we're aware of a little bit of our history with ambulance contracts in the county. We have been fortunate enough to have Care in our county for the last, you know, several years, 10 or so years, that have done this contract at no cost to the county. They run inside the city and make most of their profits inside the city when they do transports. So there's, you know, I've been told how this ambulance company makes money, and for the most part, they have taken a loss every year for the county side of it, not inside the city, but out in the county. They've done that as a service, because this is their home county, and that's what they wanted to do for us, to provide a service. We're basically at the point where they've approached the committee and told us that that's no longer going to be able to happen. Their home office is in Montgomery, and their main office outside the state is somewhere up north. But they are in the position where they're going to have to start charging for their service out in the county. Now, we do provide things that are of financial value. Our ambulance buildings that we have bought, our substations that we've built for them, they're absolutely acknowledging that, and that will go a long way with whomever we contract with. But, you know, we're going to go from not having, to pay anything for an ambulance service to, you know, there's no telling how much from $150 to potentially $200,000 to have it. So there's some concern there. We, you know, I don't know that the county can afford that, and we're going to have to bid it out and see what comes in and just make some hard decisions. We have to have an ambulance service in the county. We need one. Our citizens need it, but it's certainly fixing to become a problem. You know, we're having issues right now. I don't know of any other companies in the county. They would obviously have to come from outside or potentially even Georgia to bid on it. So we're, we have put the bid together, and, you know, we're wanting to send the bid out, and we're just wanting to get the bids in and see where we are with everything that's going on to include the space that we give them and all of that, to see what that's going to, you know, come out to, but.
Well, that was the big trade-off. I remember the last time we were in negotiation. We were going to build them buildings, provide it to them rent-free, no utilities, I mean, all that, you know, most businesses, most businesses would love to have that deal.
Yep.
So don't say they're not making money, because when you take that off of their expense list, I guarantee, they may not be getting rich. But, you know, I know they have to pay people to be there. So I just, and I'm in favor. I mean, we got to bid it. We got to bid it, but.
Well, and I understand where you're coming from. I'm just telling you that I've spoke to Kevin, I've spoke to Tim, who owned an ambulance company. I've talked to, obviously, Bob and Chance both, and they're all more of a paramedic EMT-type person than I am. And they're just saying that the county, the county side, not the city, but the county side is a loss, no matter that we're giving them a space or not. It costs them more money to keep the trucks available than what they're making on transports, because we're not supplementing anything. So I'm just telling you what.
Well, I mean, I agree with that. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you know, when you provide to a company certain benefits, after so many years, they take those benefits for granted. In other words, they don't even, they don't even put that in their bottom line. And that's all I'm saying, is just to make sure we are contributing.
Yes.
I don't know, how many, how many, how many ambulance stations we got? I know we got one in Seale.
Two, one in Fort Mitchell and one in Seale. And the Fort Mitchell truck is a half of a truck. It's not a full truck.
Commercial, commercial rent on two buildings would probably be Mr. Fundenberg's more in that name, but probably $2,000, $3,000 a month, commercial rent.
No, they built a building next to, or they didn't build, they retrofitted a building that was next door to the one we own. They're not in our building. They were in their.
But they're not there anymore.
Okay, let's don't get out of hand. Okay, so what you want us to do?
I would like to send out a bid for the ambulance service contract.
All right, Ms. Horn.
Yes, sir, and I'm proposing opening the bids on August 19th at 3:00 PM in the commission conference room. That will allow us time to consider, consider and discuss it in our budget meetings as well as.
Okay, you've heard the request now, that, let's get a motion. Then we'll talk more about it. You've heard, you've. You've heard, you've heard the motion now to, or the request to have a motion to send out bids to, for ambulance service, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Corbett, we have a second.
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Martin, now, any discussion, Ms. Epps?
It, it does, but they don't have enough transports out in the county to, and the people that are uninsured, they don't, they're just telling us that between the uninsured not collecting and not having enough runs in the county to make a profit from what it, it costs, that's, that's where we are.
And, and before we make a decision on this, I'd like to see the nine one one or the sheriff or the city's records to how many actual calls that they made inside, outside the city, I'd like to see that. And also, you know, there's some calls they make that don't go through nine one one or any of that stuff. So, like if I was to call directly to an ambulance service, then they wouldn't go, or if the hospital was to get me an ambulance, it wouldn't go through nine one one, all right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Discussion, so, you know, the sheriff had mentioned earlier Care, and, and we've been doing this a long time, we had Stat before that, which was the ambulance service, and before that, you know, years, years back, when Phoenix Ambulance Service and Alabama Ambulance Service and Community Ambulance Service, can't believe I remember that, but, um, we paid them, the county paid them a subsidy every month.
But we didn't furnish buildings.
That's correct, that's where I was going, the carrot was that when the new company came in, they said, you're not going to have to pay us, and that was the inviting idea, and the other three ambulance services just kind of went, fell by the wayside, and they went away through, you know, different avenues, but then the decision was by the county to provide the building, then we tacked on the Fort Mitchell truck, which, you know, I'll tell you, from what I've heard from them, the Fort Mitchell truck doesn't stay busy enough, I don't think we need to take it away, I'm not saying that, but we've, we've added on some more requirements to them, so we need to keep that in mind as we go forward with this too, because the initial requirement was one truck in Seale, one truck in the middle of the county, and we were going to provide them a place to be at, then we added the Fort Mitchell truck, which, which he says, the sheriff says half a truck, but I guess he's talking a daytime truck, you know, nine to five or eight.
It's not a full time.
Right, not twenty-four hours, so we need to look at each piece of that, because I remember the last time we started negotiating, they said, just let us drop the Fort Mitchell truck, if we can drop that, we'd be okay. Not saying that's the option and the best option for it, because I know we get calls and we got a lot of people in Fort Mitchell, but we got a lot of people in Crawford and a lot of people in La Donia and a lot of people other places as well. So, I'm, I think we need to put all aspects of this on the table and look at every piece of it and really look at it strong, because if, you know, if you're talking a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, then, you know, I, that, that building has to come into that, that, that definitely has to come in the cost of our utilities and our building and everything else, and is that taken off the top? Are they considering that, that needs to be very specific in that bid, maybe with options and, and maybe a negotiation with the, with the low bidder, so just some thought process in this. There's just so much history in it, I understand, I've heard them for years say they didn't make enough money on these trucks and there weren't enough paying customers and all of that, but those people that have paid those bills disagree with that, like Ms. Epps said, you'll get a four, five, six, seven hundred dollar bill in the mail, so we just need to be prepared for all aspects of this, you know, you know, because I've had people ask me to put up, can you put an ambulance in Crawford, can you put an ambulance on La Donia, hey, let's look at it all, if we could put it in Fort Mitchell, we can put it anywhere, so.
All right, the motion before us is to solicit bids for this, this most, this discussion now has turned into, after the bids come in, more than.
I disagree, it's also turned into the way we write the bid.
Yeah, well, yes, ma'am, go ahead. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reed.
Call for the question.
Guys just fixing to, Mr. Reed. Ms. Horn. Call for a question.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps. District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Scruggs.
Yes.
All right, now we're going back up to the year-to-date report from the administrator, I figured it may be complicated and long this reason.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Okay.
What about this amendment to the ambulance service contract, have you signed it already?
Yes, y'all approved it at the last meeting, I just put that in for reference, the reason being is you'll see that the, the extension expires.
Yeah, this is the extension.
Right, and we're just, I just wanted you to be mindful.
And we voted on that?
Yes.
You already did, yes, ma'am.
I don't remember that.
That's just for a point of reference, in case you wanted to know how long the extension was.
Yeah, the contract something had run out, so we just extended it.
Yes, sir.
So we could get into the bid process.
And that's in October, so we're timely with our bid as well as the budget process, and that's what I wanted you to have in front of you. Yes, sir, I provided for you a financial report, I know you asked for quarterly, however, as you know, we have not completed the third quarter, and at the time you asked, we were in the middle of the quarter. So what I did was pull a year-to-date figures for you as of June thirtieth. It should be on the top of your packet that's in your commission books this morning, there's a summary of the overall budget. I did a comparison for three years from June, each year, you can see two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and that shows you that we did have a surplus, if you will, each year, and that is what, whatever, I guess every county was. You don't want to see anything different from that. The next one is what I provided for you, is an all funds report, that's every fund that you, the commission oversees. It also is a three-year report showing you what we have collected or received by June thirtieth every year, and that was eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and as you can see, in, in two thousand eighteen, it was nineteen million, five hundred and seventy-four, eight, twenty-two, thirty, and that's all funds now, that's, that's not just general gas tax or your major operating fund.
Just like to note for those in the audience may not have a copy of this, this is thirty-six funds that we maintain.
Yes, sir.
Thirty-six bank accounts.
It sure is, every month.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, sir, and, and, and then there was a change, it was an increase, if you will, in the, in the budgeted funds and revenue, which is actually, it's about four hundred and twenty-six thousand, seventeen dollars, to year two thousand nineteen, and that was twenty million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight cents. Then in two thousand twenty, which we've collected to date, you know, you can see at this point, it's twenty-one million, five forty-nine, two eleven, so COVID has affected some, but not as negatively as what we thought.
And, you know, like we had already said, it will probably hit us next year.
The next report, I think, is, is more of what you were probably looking for, I, I didn't get really any direction on what you were looking for, but what I did pull was our major revenue sources, if you look under revenue, this one is your general fund report as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, it shows, and fortunately, before COVID hit, we had collected our avalon taxes, our, our business license, and most of our major funds were, were, but the sales tax. You know, we have seen a slight decrease in that, but overall, you can see what we currently have collected in actual revenue as of June thirtieth, which is thirteen million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand and eleven dollars. Also, in expenses, what we have expensed year-to-date, as of June thirtieth, that is, eleven million, seven thirty-two, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. So we are about one point five under our revenue at this point, which is very good, we're in a good position going in with our expenses, and I want to thank the department heads for that, because they certainly monitoring over the years have helped. I provided a chart, a small graph to.
Now, let me ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
On the revenue, the three sources that you named there.
Yes, sir.
Basically, we're showing an under balance, is that what that means?
No, sir.
Usually when it's in parentheses, it means negative.
You're defaced it.
So.
Where?
Under revenue, avalon tax, it says remaining balance, eighty thousand, two hundred and eighty, and it's in parentheses.
Oh, so that's to be collected.
That's what?
To be collected, so, yes, sir.
All right, that's the remaining balance to be collected, okay, I got you.
And we, and we get those taxes in, it, it could be through Paulette's, through the taxes, you know, there's avalon that comes in through there, Naomi's just had her sale, I'm not sure if that's been posted, but I'm sure it probably hasn't on the June thirtieth, because this again is not to this date, but it's through June thirtieth, so we, it will come in through the year, we've got to September thirtieth.
Yeah, that, that, you know, it's mostly tags, right?
Most of it at this point, yes, sir, other than if somebody comes in and redeems some property, we may have that, but yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The next report is the gasoline fund, and I, and I did want to.
No, I mean, I stopped you on the chart, so back up to the chart.
Okay.
This.
Yes, sir, I just, what I did was, we provided it in graphics for you, just so you can see the portion of revenue, your avalon taxes, as well as your business license and privilege, sales and use, and your other revenue sources. If you looked in your budget, district three mentioned the thirty-two accounts, that is what we just placed those under other. I mean, that could be anything from mortgage and deeds, which reflects, you know, property being sold, it could be from state grant funds, you know, there's a different, all different types of funds, we didn't want to list all of those, but that's under the other, but I did list your major funds, and that just gives you an idea of, of, I guess you might say a snapshot view with the graphics, but it does, if you, it ties back to my numbers on the chart. The next report that you have is on the gasoline fund, that also provides you a year-to-date revenue as of June thirtieth, and I do want to mention this, because I didn't want the engineer, he's, he's not here today, but I didn't want him to get worried. You know, we collect gas tax in arrears, so it hasn't posted yet, in other words, we receive June and July, so that, well, you do see in parentheses, it will be corrected as soon as we receive the month of June's, so, but that does provide you an overview of what he's collected in revenue, which is one point eight million, nine hun, I mean, one point eight ninety, five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. His expenses, as it's showing, is eighty-seven thousand over, but it's not really, because again, he is, that revenue hasn't posted yet, but it's, it's there, and he's also has his fund balance, so, but he, and I have to admit, he does watch very closely and monitor his budget very closely, they have a very good inventory system, and he knows exactly when, almost to the penny, when he spends something, as well as we're notified as well, so, and he's working very well with the bookkeeper, Ms. Tina here, because they closely monitor each other's expenditures. You have to understand, the larger departments, such as the sheriff's department and the engineering department, there's hundreds of purchase orders that come through during a week, and it's very important with those many moving parts and the amount of expenditures that go through those departments, that they communicate very closely, and they do, they, they try to stay balanced, so I was glad of that, but it'll show you here too, that his total budget was four million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty, so he's sitting pretty good, about halfway, which he should be at this time of the year, and I also provided for you another snapshot, gives you an idea of the revenue year-to-date, it's not included the expenditures, but the revenue, and it'll show you the largest parts, you know, that he has, which is the one point eight. The next report is your sanitation fund, and that is, you know, our garbage department, as you can see, they're averaging a surplus of about two hundred thousand a month, roughly, currently that's what, and they're on target for that. Their budget's two million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, and year-to-date, they've collected revenue, two million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand and forty-one dollars and some change. Their expenses are one million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six oh six, so they're under in their expenses, as with all the other departments, are under in their expenses, and that's very important to note. And they have seven hundred and sixty-four thousand roughly dollars more to go to collective revenue. They're, and that, the interesting thing about that department, it's solely operational on what they collect, it's not taxes, it's not something that we contribute or transfer funds to, it's totally ran by an independent private business, and it's based on, you know, what they call a fee system, is what they collect, so if they don't collect it and make it, they can't spend it. The next report is your cautious snapshot, I call it, your graphics showing the revenue side of what they have currently in their budget, just to provide a picture for you. We will, like I said, go into the budget session, you'll be provided all the department's expense versus budget, entered budget books, which will show you there another picture, by then, it will be probably July and some of August that would have posted against this report, and it'll show you what's remaining and what's left. At this point, we have not, you know, I do budget fund balance, we have not exceeded our revenue projections, nor have we entered into the fund balance at this point, so we're doing very good in expenditures overall.
All right, I'm going to make this, first of all, this is a good report, and I think we need to have them at least three times a year, but when we have them before, send it digitally to Bob, so we got some people out in the audience that look kind of puzzled, they don't know what we're talking about, so send it to Bob so he can put it on the screen. Any other questions, Commissioner Scruggs?
How much does our raises cost us each year?
Well, it depends on the percentage, but if you go with three percent, the average raise would be about three hundred thousand for general government.
And how much is reserve?
At this point, probably about one point five, one point six.
That sounds like a lot of money for us po' folks, but it needs to be, it needs to be around six, really.
Yes, it does, you're required to keep three months, or should keep three months operating, which is six to eight hundred thousand, so we are maintaining, the commission is, which you did set a policy for that years ago, to remain, to keep a fund balance at that level, and that's important, in case of emergencies such as COVID or a pandemic or something happening with the state, we can operate independently of receiving that revenue for two or three months until we can recover.
Let me ask you again, how much are we required to keep?
Three months.
And how much is that?
It depends on the amount of expenditures, if we hit an emergency, I would request a reduction, but say six to eight hundred thousand a month, yes, sir, for general government, that's excluding engineering and sanitation.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Epps. Who's that from, you need to talk into your mic, Ms. Epps, the mask makes it hard to hear.
Okay, is that better?
That's a lot better.
Okay, I received this letter from, and it's from, it's from the, it's really from Ms. Bailey, who is the person that collects avalon taxes, I'm thinking, for Russell County, she did a comparison. Did, did all the commissioners receive this letter, or?
I think we did.
We see Lauren and I gave mine to the commission office to make sure they got it.
And Ms. Martin just got me one this morning.
Okay, so I, I'm trying to figure, she had sent a letter before about the contract had not been signed, and I think you said that you were searching around to see, could you get a better, I guess, a better price for collecting avalon taxes?
Well, it's not just price related, it, it's a matter of service, we, you know, we, we didn't realize the loss in the jurisdiction that we were experiencing until we had the court situation and we did a lot of research, and we really need boots on the ground here to maintain and monitor the police jurisdiction because of the ever-changing annexations, and that's, that's really the issue, is for our collections and to stabilize our budget, that needs to be monitored closely, and they can't offer that service, so I'm looking with the state and another agency to do that, to protect our revenue.
Yeah, when we first went with another company, like this particular company, I think has changed hands three or four times since we've been dealing with them, they were very good at the beginning. Don't know that, I think we're missing a lot of revenue now, at the time, we were missing a lot of revenue dealing with the state, but they had a big shakeup in the state collection department, in fact, I got kind of ugly with some of them over there about the service that we got from the state, and we gave them certain specific examples of people that we wasn't, they weren't collecting taxes from, and I accused the guy over there a lot of things, and he ended up getting fired, but.
Well, and even, district six, that time the state has reorganized, and that's, we're kind of leaning to look at it again.
But we do need to look at this. But we do need to look at this at least every three to four years to make sure we get into what we're supposed to get, because those of you that don't know, now, the sales tax is the main thing, you said avalon tax, but it's mainly sales and use tax that they collect for. We have the most complicated system in the state of Alabama, probably in the world, because if you go to Lowe's in Columbus and buy something, and it's delivered, and you live in Russell County, and you happen to have a Phoenix City address or an Opelika address, they're the ones that get credit for the sales tax, not us. And so, it's, somebody has to really stay on top of it, these companies, to make sure it's in their computer where this sales tax goes, because the reason I found that out is I bought a refrigerator for my mother at Lowe's and had it delivered, and the sales tax went to Phoenix City, and we live out in the county.
Well, and, and it's not just, you know, with the sales tax, business license, and Mr. Frank can attest to this, either you signed an agreement with, I don't think they've ever collected on a late, because I know Mr. Frank wants most of them, but we have had a few that were, that were out of the county, that couldn't be reached. That was where they were supposed to step in with, because they.
Okay, this is, you know, this is an item that's not really on the agenda, it's related.
Yes.
It's related definitely to the revenue, and it's something that is being looked into and it's been handled, but to answer your question, Ms. Epps, yes, we all got that letter.
Yeah.
And it's been looked into.
Yeah, and I was here when we changed and went to another company from the state collecting, and I remember that, the difference in that avalon tax that went up because, I understand that the state was not collecting all the tax. I was on, on the commissioners doing it.
Right, it was, we took, got quite an increase, but I think it's time to look at it again, and maybe the state is doing a better job now, I hope.
Well, they have a local person, and that's what's nice, you could say, if there's a question, they could drive to Ladona and boots on the N C, actually. I did want to point out, I did want to revisit the summary report. I wanted the commission to police realize, because I've heard a lot of things, since 2018, you see, we've returned to the bottom line, one point, say, 1 million. In '19, we returned to the bottom line, another one point, almost 2 million. So, you know, we are managing our funds very well, as well as, as we can. The department heads, again, I want to give credit to those, because that's where it begins, and as you know, like the sheriff says, he always turns money back in. Most departments do.
I hope he didn't hear you say that, but go ahead.
And, and the public does, and, I mean, all of the revenue commission, with, without them, you would not see this return, and, and that's what is so important. Usually in counties, you see, they, they think they have it, they should spend it, and that's not the case here.
Yeah, I know, a lot of, a lot of governments, if you, if you budgeted $20 million, and you spend 18 million, then next year, you don't get but 18 million. And so, we don't want to get into that situation, because we want to take the benefit from good management of the budget, and hopefully you do turn some funds back in. That's what, that's the reason we're able to keep going and give raises and all that stuff. Any other, okay, go ahead, Ms. Horn.
I did hand to you this morning, it was, it's not for approval today, but I did want to make a note of it, and it will be on the agenda the next meeting. It's the Russell County Building Access Procedure. I would like for the commissioners to review that draft. Please be familiar with it. Since there was a security threat recently, the sheriff, myself, and Mr. Franklin, we're Emergency Management, Homeland Security, we've met, and this is a procedure that we would like to put in writing and in place for department heads and elected officials, and if you've got any changes or suggestions, you can certainly talk with the sheriff, or I can pass those on, but please look at that, it will be on the next agenda.
Well, according to this, this draft, the way I read it, and this is the second time, I think, I've seen it, we don't need to take any action. The sheriff's in charge.
He is. I just would like to, well, ratify and make sure all the department heads have a copy.
Okay.
I do have comments, sheriff or you, who's going to take the comments? Not now, I'm talking about, I wrote them down. Okay, I'll get them to the sheriff then.
That's fine.
All right, next item is Mr. Turney, Mr. Fundberg. Okay. Good, thank you. All right, discussion, Commissioner Corbett.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know we don't have to put stuff on there, but I want to put it on there as a placeholder, so I would remember to talk about it. I actually have three real quick topics. The first one is the ACCA Watch Event. They have, in lieu of the conference, they have asked that commissioners get together in their counties and participate in the opening session, and then the second session as well. This date is August 19th. It starts at 10:45 a.m., which is Central Time, so it'd be 11:45 to 2:30 Eastern Time.
God, too much.
Yep, but the good thing about that is, is the extension, our county extension agent, Jennifer Davidson, has agreed, and they're doing this across the state, to bring in lunch for the commissioners and the, the people that attend, and it's not just commissioners. We want, as the ACCA put it, anybody that would attend the annual conference, we would like to come and do this. So, that includes the EMA director, the engineer, the sheriff, the 911, anybody that typically would go, the administrator, whoever would go to the conference to attend this, and then obviously, it's open to others as well. What we do need is a number for the lunch. So, I talked to Jennifer yesterday, and she said, "As long as she has the number, she, they will be absolutely thrilled to provide lunch for us that day." And my suggestion is, is to try to do it in the commission chambers. I think we've got an, an open-up space.
Come out here.
You've already got the seats marked, yeah, in this room, but instead of sitting up here, we sit out there in the audience and project the meeting up on the, on the screen here, since we already have the AOV for that, so. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I've just got one question, because I haven't seen anything changing in a what, but at one time, when they canceled our conference, they said that they were going to have a in-person meeting with one person from each county. Has that been canceled?
That's, this is the replacement, from what I understand, for that. They want to actually bring us together, socially distancing, and have it here, so.
So, it's just that one day?
Yes, ma'am. It's that one day, August 19th, from 11:45 Eastern Time to 2:30 Eastern Time.
Ms. Horn, will you remind us of that?
Yes. From 11:45 Eastern Time till 2:30 Eastern Time. Lunch provided, I just need to know who's going to be here so we can get the numbers to them.
What day of the week is that?
That is on a Wednesday, I believe.
On a Wednesday?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, looks good.
Well, we're just going to be doing one, but one, we're not trying.
You know, I don't know what type of platform it is, whether it's Zoom or some Web, WebX meeting, I don't know, we can find out, Jennifer Dash, or can, if you can call her and ask her that. All right, the other, the other two things I have, real quick, I just want to give the commission a little heads-up on this, but we've, we've had some discussions in an email, and we're going to talk about this a little bit more, but there is a, a proposal to consider putting a, another statue up, but this one of Horace King near the Dillingham Street Bridge. He was a very iconic figure in, in our history, not only of Phoenix City and Russell County, but also, a few years ago, I was touring the Capitol with my son and his, they started talking about the staircases and stuff in the state Capitol being designed by Horace King, so something we need to look at, and just keep that in the back of your mind as this goes forward. I'll definitely give you some updates if this takes legs, but I feel like it's a pretty good project. And the last thing I want to say is, is to the chair and everybody else, we seem to get a little frustrated when we're talking up here, but when we cancel a work session, this is the only opportunity I have to talk about a topic, so I'm going to get my talk in, so I'm asking you to, you know, if we're going to cancel the work session, be a little bit considerate of that, that this is the first time I've seen what I'm looking at, and I'm not a yes man, I'm not going to come here and just vote on something without talking about it, so that's my only comments.
Yeah, I, I hope you've noticed that since we don't have the work session, I've called on people like the judge and over here, which we normally wouldn't do in this meeting, but.
Right.
I think it's more important to get our thoughts out in the setting than to have two meetings with the virus growing like it's growing, and, you know.
And I want to thank Ms. Horn for giving us this financial overview. We've been needing that and wanting it, and appreciate your work on that. And I think what the chair said, to have it periodically.
Yeah, at least, at least three times a year, and if you've got something that you want presented that's not in here, be sure to tell Ms. Horn what it is, because she can't do it if she don't know what you want. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chalmers.
Yes, sir.
We running behind on the census.
Yes, we are. Whole state is, whole.
Yeah, it's, it's very important. We need to contact the census and invite them here, if anything we can do to help get these people accounted in Russell County, Phoenix City, and Russell County, because next year, we're going to have to redistrict a county.
Well, it's not just us.
It's not just a county, but the state representative, the city council, all that coming up next year.
It's just not us. I mean, every county is sort of running behind. We were around, last I saw, we were at 55%, which is pitiful, but one thing is, is they can't get people that want to go out and knock on doors now anyway with this virus going on, so if you don't mail it in, or you don't fill it out online, then pretty good chance you won't get counted, but hopefully, they may delay the whole thing for another year or two, that's what I have heard, that we may not even have a 2020 census. I mean, I know it's in the Constitution, but they can change things under emergencies, and they may change it to 2021 or 2022, I don't know, I just heard information. Anything else? Your motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Got one announcement, getting in a hurry. Crawford Market Day is the third Saturday of every month, 8 to 1, still having that